It's six o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the ordering welcome yes. Two, call of Rose West out of Shakora.
Chairman Clemens.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Marchman.
Here.
Commissioner Duke.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Praying invocation will be done by Mr. Maxwell. Thank you so much for coming.
There's no sign saying do not touch the microphones or I didn't say that. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, it is a blessing to serve you by serving others in Coleman County. Lord, we thank you for the privilege that we have to live in a progressive, prosperous community. We also thank you for Chairman Clemens, Commissioners Watson, Marchman, Duke, Freeman, and County Administrator Bullard. Lord, these men worked tirelessly to help make Coleman County such a great place to live and to raise a family. We ask that you bless and guide them as they serve you and our community. Lord, bless tonight's meeting, and may you be honored in everything discussed, for we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Everybody please place the flag, attention, salute, pledge.
A pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Five approved amendments of July sixteenth, twenty twenty four meeting, and August fifth, twenty twenty four emergency meeting preparations, expenditures, personal actions, payroll, requisitions, and approve all journal entries to be posted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to read it out of time.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that. Call in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass six public comments and updates. We do not have any.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment. As y'all know, I'm here to watch and supervise since 2014. I've been very blessed to serve Coleman County and have enjoyed serving Coleman County. But at this time, I'm about to say another term in the county election. I've really enjoyed the service. I've enjoyed the prayers, the friendships, and enjoyed serving the people. But at this time, you know, I feel like it's not what I need to say. And it's funny that this morning when I was doing my morning devotion, probably sixteen nine, a man's heart plans his way, but the Lord directs himself. And so at this time, I would just like to announce and thank everybody for allowing me to serve in this position. And I look forward to being involved in Coleman County in some way or another down the line, but right now I will not say the socks again. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. You don't say it's a hundred. Seven, we'll move on to new business. A resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty six apply for mansion allowed grant funds for the airport hangar taxi lane rehabilitation project.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairmen, Commissioners, this is an extension of the grant that we had last year. We were not able to place them with the grant last year because we did not have enough money for the paving. This is some of our oldest asphalt and it will take some asphalt rehabilitation along with the steel codes. So this is the second phase of that grant. This is seven five twenty five grant. So that's $229,000 project. The city and county would have to split 25% of that. About $28,000 total. That's 25%.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve.
I'll take that motion.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. Thank you so much, Ben.
Thank you all.
B, resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty seven allocate American Rescue Funds to purchase paving machine for the road department.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the next, this one of the next two items are resolutions for equipment using the American Rescue Funds that we have to stand by the floor thirty one of this year or commit by floor thirty one of this year. And so this is a much needed equipment that we will be able to kind of spin ahead of the game.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item B.
Chairman, I'll take that motion.
Call in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. C, resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty eight allocate American Rescue Funds to purchase a shoulder widener for the road department.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item C.
I'll take that motion.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. D, resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty nine allocate American Rescue Funds to purchase tractors for the road department.
Is there a number? Do we need to have a number on it?
We need a number on the number.
On the resolution, there is the amount, total amount will be...
I mean, tell me the total number of tractors.
There's three tractors on the resolution. Yes, sir. It lists 247,548 dollars in all the revenue funds to purchase three massive trucks and tractors. And that is listed on the resolution.
Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item D on the S, showing that there's purchase of three tractors.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. E, authorize the chairman to sign change order from state line account for the Coleman County Courthouse HVAC upgrades in the amount of 12,580.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item E.
I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. F, authorize JMB Holden LLC to finalize grading for solid top dress for the pandemic response center in the amount of 19,715 dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item L.
I'll take that motion.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. G, authorize purchase of a 2019 John Deere compact loader for four paint water authority for the road department in the amount of 58,000.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item Z.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. H, consider safe driving program.
Motion to approve item H.
I'll take that motion.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. I consider fiscal year 2025 county transportation plan.
Mr. Chairman, this is, as mentioned earlier, this is for regular rebuild Alabama funding that's going up in 2025. It required we to pre the road numbers and amounts in minutes, and I'll do that. We have four roads that are spread out through the county. First road is County Road 1282, missing an amount of 513,354.93. Second road is County Road 2.3, it's an amount of 391.7162. Third road is County Road 719, it's an amount of 517,783.4. And fourth road is County Road 1386, also known as Warhite Mountain Road, and that amount is 311,474.73. And the grand total of possible rebuild Alabama community is 1,734,323.62.
Motion approved item M. I'll take that motion.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. J, consider buyout of Kent Financial Laces for two hydraulic excavators in the amount of 81,9129.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item J.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that motion.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. K, consider outdoor lighting agreement and right away easement Coleman Electric Cooperative for power supply Smith Lake Park. And authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item K.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that motion.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. A, consider approval of venture security for upgrade to exist in fire alarm system after economic development and sales tax freedom in the amount of 13,975.
Mr. Chairman, that motion approved item L.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. M, consider payment to Sercro for re-miaison at Coleman Board Education Bill in the amount of 19,144.80.
Mr. Chairman, that motion approved item L.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. N, consider Commissioner Watson and Commissioners Yukes nominate Terry Bentley for reappointment to the E911 Board for a four-year term to expire nine, one, twenty eight.
I'd make a motion to approve item N. I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. O, consider Commissioner Marchman and Commissioner Freeman's nominee Samuel Tucker for reappointment to the E911 Board for a four-year term to expire nine, one, twenty eight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item L.
I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. P, consider the city of Coleman's nominee Ryan Bradbury to the E911 Board to replace Dana Phelps for a four-year term to expire nine, one, twenty eight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item P.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. Q, consider commission nominee Kenneth Cornelius to Alamo Mountain Lakes Cheerism Association for a two-year term to expire nine, thirty, twenty six.
Make a motion to approve item Q. I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. R, consider the renewal of stop loss insurance for Loews of London increasing specified deductions to 150,000 renewal effective October first, 2024. Estimated annual premium is 685,318.1% increase in annual cost.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item R.
I'll take that motion.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. Consider changes in county prescription, prescription of road copays to be effective January first, 2025. Consider changes in county and local funding levels for health insurance to be effective January one, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. T, consider the renewal of higher helmet services with higher made cover all active Coleman County employees eligible for employee benefits renewal effective October first, 2024. Estimated annual premium is 32,500 for fiscal year 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item T.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. U, ratify the purchase of a Ford F-600 Super Duty sanitation truck from Sourcewell bid number contract number zero six, zero nine, two zero in AL for sanitation in the amount of 164,601.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. B, consider the surplus of the following items from the road department to be optional road deals or by any means necessary. 1991 International 4900, bid number listed. 2003 Ford F-150, bid number listed. 2007 Ford F-150, bid number listed. 1999 International A100, bid number listed. A 2010 John Deere 5101 Echo, bid number listed. 2006 six Massey Ferguson model MF5465, bid number listed. And a 2019 Waker USO ST31 serial number listed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. W, consider the surplus of the following items from the parks to be optional road deals or by any means necessary. One powered up slide, two powered up bounce house. 2006 turf golf cart, serial number listed. 2008 club golf cart, golf cart, serial number listed. And one green rigs 36 feet by seven feet. One yellow rigs 36 feet by seven feet. One yellow rigs 36 feet by five feet. Thirteen seven-foot aluminum ladders and one moors drum handler.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item B.
I'll take that motion.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. X, proposed preliminary plant resubdivide of Brown Lake. E, a subdivision, a minor subdivision containing two lots in Commission District One. The subdivision is located on County Road 1435, a quarter of a mile north intersection of Highway 157 and County Road 1435.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item B.
I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. Y, proposed preliminary plant Catalina Crest subdivision, a major subdivision containing twelve lots in Commission District Four. The subdivision is located on County Road 287, approximately one and a half miles west of the intersection of County Road 437 and County Road 287.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item Y.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. Z, proposed preliminary plant resubdivide of Green Acres subdivision, a minor subdivision containing six lots in Commission District Two. The subdivision is located on County Road 1223 at the Morgan County Line.
Motion to approve item Z.
I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. Double A, proposed preliminary plant reserve retirement village subdivision, a major subdivision containing twelve lots in Commission District Three. The subdivision is located on County Road 717, approximately 800 feet west of the entrance to Stonebridge Farmers Event Bean.
Make a motion to approve item A. I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. B, B, proposed preliminary plant Chaney Branch Farm subdivision, a major subdivision containing eighteen lots in Commission District Two. The subdivision is located on the corner of County Road 1191 and County Road 1196, a quarter of a mile east of Mission Grove Church on County Road 1191.
Motion to approve item B. I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. C, C, extend bid number 1443 jail supplies. Jail supplies of chemicals to North Alabama Chemical, Central Paper for the laundry and kitchen chemicals and to aerosol solutions for the fogging machine chemicals for one year.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve C.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. D, D, extend bid number 1444 service of the sheriff's office and other various county vehicles to Burco Incorporated, DPA, Havelane Express Labor for one year.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item D. I'll take that motion.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. Double E, award bid number 1468 for pass control to lanes pass control.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve item E.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
I would in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. F, request from attorney for executive session under section seven of Act Number 2005 dash four.
Mr. Chairman, I've drafted a letter advising the executive session is necessary proper to protect confidential information. The code section applicable is found in Alvin and Poe thirty six, dash twenty five, eight, dash seven, A three, and A seven. I have an attorney license to practice on Alabama, and the executive session will be to discuss pending or threatened questions. I respectfully recommend a request that a motion for executive session be considered at this time. I estimate it will be approximately 30 minutes, and that we will reconvene around that time. If you wish to vote on executive session, please remember to have to take a roll call vote to indicate your vote to tie it or connect.
At this time, we have a request for a motion to be considered for executive session based on the recommendations of our county attorney regarding opinion of criminal matters and commerce of trade matter. Salute.
Chairman Clemens.
Here. For night, or yea. Get one out here, man. Yea.
Mr. Marchman.
Yea.
Mr. Marchman.
Yea.
Mr. Duke.
Yea.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yea. Yay.